Good morning. Committee on Agriculture hearing entitled American Agriculture Trade with Cuba will come to order. I've asked G T. to open us with a prayer. G T.
Thank you, Chairman. Proud to lead us in prayer. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this glorious day, Lord. We thank you for the resources you provide us. To thank you for the fact that you provide us with this industry of agriculture that allows us to feed and clothe and building materials and all the great things that come through your blessings, Lord. Now, just pray for the members of this committee and those in attendance here that you may minister to their needs and bless them. In all this, I pray in my Savior's name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. The United States has a long and complicated relationship with our neighbor to the South. While our close proximity to Cuba makes the island nation a natural trading partner, the stranglehold the Castro regime has had on Cuba has long prevented normalized relations between our two countries. That stranglehold resulted in the United States imposing an embargo on trade with Cuba that has been in place in various forms for almost sixty years. In 2000, the Trade Sanctions Reform and Export Enhancement Act, known as TISRA, authorized certain sales of food, medicine, and medical equipment to Cuba, subject to various restrictions on credit and financing. One such restriction requires Cuba to pay cash in advance for purchases, interpreted in 2005 by the Bush administration to mean payment in cash before goods were shipped. December 2014, amongst a host of other changes, the Obama administration announced its intention to modify the cash in advance provisions to require payment before transfer of title. While that move was generally applauded, I and many of my colleagues believe the U.S. secured too little in return for the litany of other concessions made to the brutal regime that continues to remain in power. The Castro regime remains one of the world's most oppressive human rights violators. Their heavy hand is in everything, included agriculture, where Alimport remains the sole entity allowed to trade in agricultural products with foreign entities. Against this sobering backdrop, I believe there lays an opportunity, albeit a rather narrow one, to make changes that will positively benefit both agriculture producers here at home while contributing to economic growth in Cuba. To that end, our colleague and General Farm Commodities and Risk Management Subcommittee Chairman Rick Crawford authored the Cuba Agricultural Export Act, or H.R. 3687, which lifts the financing restrictions under TISRA while providing for both market promotion and U.S. agribusiness investment under strict safeguards. The committee was involved in the development of that bill, and both the ranking member, Mr. Peterson, and I are co-sponsors. While I am very hopeful that we can find a path forward on expanding agricultural trade with Cuba, I remain firmly opposed to lifting the embargo or restrictions on travel. We are dealing with a regime that cares little more than ensuring its own perpetuity and the prosperity, all at the expense of the Cuban people. That being said, I think we all look forward to a day when the United States enjoys full, normalized relations with Cuba. I also realize this is an issue where good folks will disagree, often quite passionately. That generally applies to both proponents and opponents of expanding agricultural trade with Cuba alike. My intention today is to have a respectful, constructive dialogue with the goal of exploring common ground. With that, I thank our witnesses for being here today, and I recognize Mr. Peterson for any comments he would like to make.
Well, thank you, Ms. Chairman, and I also want to welcome today's witnesses to the Ag Committee.
As people know, I've been a longtime supporter of expanding trade with Cuba. Some of you who were here at the time when I was chairman may remember that we passed legislation in this committee that would expand U.S. agriculture exports and allow Americans to travel to Cuba more freely. Unfortunately, that legislation died when it went to the Foreign Affairs Committee. Now, as we're all aware, the administration has taken steps to ease both trade and travel restrictions, and I believe this is a good step. But there is still more work to be done and more work we can do to open this market to American agricultural products. I disagree with the chairman. I'd like to see the embargo lifted, but I'm doubtful that it's politically possible to do so. I do want to caution some of our friends in the Ag community harbor about some of these glowing press reports that I see after they travel to Cuba. You know, and I was there last year, but, you know, with the exception of rice, wheat, maybe dry edible beans, lentils, the potential benefits are limited, at least in my opinion in the short term, because Cuba is a small country, and most people living there have a very limited income. You know, so, you know, whatever we do will be positive, but some of these press reports, you'd think that it was like the whole world would be overturned if we do something here. And, you know, when you've got people making twenty dollars a day, there's not a whole lot they can buy, you know, outside of Staples. So, we need to keep things in balance here, and, you know, I don't know what it's going to take to get the incomes going up in Cuba, given the regime that's there, which I do agree with the chairman, that they are, I believe, a lot to be desired. And I think, you know, lifting the embargo would actually help raise the income in Cuba and therefore make it more likely that they'd have money to buy things going forward. So, you know, as I said, I think the long-term trade with Cuba is going to be a benefit to U.S. agriculture, to the Cuban people, and I'll do what I can, working with my colleagues, to see if that happens. So, again, I thank the chair and look forward to today's testimony.
Chairman Yosback, thanks that. Chair would request that other members submit their opening statements for the record, so our witnesses may begin their testimony to ensure that there is ample time for questions. I now like to welcome to our witness table Mark Isbell, the rice producer from North Little Rock, Arkansas, on behalf of USA Rice, and Mr. Matt Gibson, Vice President and General Manager of Grain Division, Bungie, North America, St. Louis, Missouri, on behalf of the American, North American Export Grain Association. And Matt, his adult supervision is in the room. His son, Brian, is here to make sure Dad does it right. Ms. Karen Lowe is Senior Vice President, Ag Export Finance Division Head at Cobank, A C B, Greenwood Village, Colorado. Dr. Luis Rivera, Associate Professor, Extension Economist and Director, Center for North American Studies, Department of Agriculture Economics, Texas A&amp;M University College Station. And then we have Mr. Mauricio Claver Coron, Executive Director, Cuba Democracy Advocates here in Washington, D.C. And with that, Mr. Isbell, you're recognized for five minutes. Thank you.
My name is Mark Isbell. I'm a fourth-generation Ross farmer. My family and I grow 3,000 acres of rice annually on our farm in Lono County, Arkansas. Two days ago, I was sitting on a tractor on our farm, and today I'm here in our nation's capital speaking with you. It is a remarkable privilege that we live in a country where that can happen. I'm grateful for the opportunity to appear before the committee today on behalf of the USA Rice Federation to discuss the importance of agricultural trade with Cuba. Rice harvest is underway, and I wouldn't be here without the help of my family, who is harvesting even now, and I also wouldn't be here if I did not realize the incredible importance of this issue for our farm families and farm communities across our country. The USA Rice Federation represents all segments of the U.S. rice industry, and in the U.S., rice has grown on more than three million acres, with the majority being in eight states that include Arkansas, California, Florida, Illinois, Louisiana, Mississippi, Missouri, and Texas. My grandfather started our rice farm in Arkansas soon after returning from World War II. In those days, Cuba was a major importer of U.S. rice. He was only thirty-eight, three years older than I am now, when the Cuban embargo began, and though he always hoped to see it, he never again saw any significant amounts of U.S. rice making its way back to the island before his death at age ninety. The Cuban market holds great potential for U.S. farmers. However, we are faced with obstacles, and they are not logistical and have nothing to do with our product's quality or our ability to compete in the global marketplace. The obstacles we face in selling our rice to Cuba are statutory obstacles. With your help, these obstacles can be overcome. As an export-dependent commodity, we are continually looking for new markets like Cuba to maintain a profitable industry. At the same time, our markets are threatened by excessive government support for rice producers in key advanced developing countries like Brazil, India, China, Thailand, and Vietnam that distort global markets. Over fifty years ago, rice shipments from the U.S. accounted for more than half of Cuba's imports, but since the embargo, an essentially dormant relationship between the U.S. and Cuba persisted for decades, and during that period, Cuba sought their imports from other countries as the U.S. shipped rice to every island nation except for the one most significant to our industry's vitality. Prospects brightened with the passage of T S R E E A of 2000, when U.S. agricultural and food exports to Cuba were granted what many of us believed at the time to be a broad exemption from the embargo. In November of '01, the industry made its first sale of U.S. rice to Cuba since the embargo was imposed. The sale showed what can happen when barriers are removed and people meet and find common ground for cooperation and trade. Following that first sale more continued, and as recently as '04, sales of U.S. rice to Cuba were valued at $64 million. But what might have been a renascient trade instead became a brief anomaly. Due to a regulatory change in the definition of payment of cash in advance in '05, U.S. rice exports to Cuba again dropped to zero. We learned from this experience that, given the opportunity, Cubans will buy our rice. However, as a cash-deficient economy, the Cubans need flexibility in attaining credit to purchase commodities. Globally, everyone is offered it to them except for the U.S. The question is not if Cuba will buy American rice. The question is when our country will let them. The answer to that question lies with you, the members of this committee, and your colleagues in Congress. Today, Cuba imports about $300 million worth of predominantly Vietnamese rice, which travels over 16,000 miles to each Havana, while our southern ports are close by. With appropriate statutory changes, the U.S. could regain 30% of the Cuban rice business within two years. That's an estimated 135,000 metric tons of new demand, and we anticipate the U.S. share of the market would exceed 50% within five years and 75% or more within ten. I recently had the opportunity to travel to the island with committee members Abraham and Crawford, and I saw firsthand the opportunity before us in Cuba. I'm just one of many farmers to make that journey to Cuba in the last two years, and we, like many of the Cuban citizens, share the same optimism for improving our relations. We are grateful for the apparent progress that has been made recently. However, obstacles to conducting normal trade with Cuba still exist, and for U.S. commodities to compete on a level playing field with foreign competitors, congressional action will be required. As I stated earlier, the fact that a farmer can leave a rice field and travel to Washington to talk about issues that affect his industry says much about what is great about our country. However, the fact that a farmer has to leave his family's rice field and petition Congress to allow him to sell his family's goods on the open market speaks to some small thing that is broken within our system. That something that is broken is something that you can fix. Congressman Crawford's bill is an attainable path forward toward the natural lifting of U.S. commodity prices and could be the beginning of the end of a multi-generational policy that hindsight has proven ineffective in helping the Cuban people and harmful to our farm economies. USA Rice appreciates the opportunity to put out our views to the committee and its distinguished members, and I look forward to responding to any questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to testify this morning. I am Matt Gibson, Vice President and General Manager of Bungie, North America's Grain Division. It is my honor and pleasure to testify on behalf of North American Export Grain Association, NAGA. NAGA, a not-for-profit organization chartered in 1912, works to promote and sustain the development of export trade from the United States of grains, oilseeds, and primary products processed therefrom. Bungie is a commodity trading and logistics food ingredients company with a global footprint headquartered in White Plains, New York. With over 35,000 employees that stretch the globe on four continents and forty countries, Bungie has been a part of the world food security solution for nearly 200 years by helping farmers connect seamlessly with our customers through logistics, excuse me, and the processing of high-quality products ranging from animal feed to consumer foods to renewable fuels. Trade is the lifeblood of NAGA and its member companies such as Bungie. Bungie, as well as NAGA, understand that an expanding and well-developed global marketplace for food and agricultural products provides for a trading environment that meets the needs of all stakeholders by signaling to farmers what to produce and investors where to deploy their capital so that we can most efficiently and effectively meet the needs of a growing world population. Practically speaking, Bungie serves two sets of customers, the farmer and the in-use customer. When it comes to the opportunity for agricultural trade with Cuba, our two sets of customers are very much aligned. Both see economic growth and improved diets as fundamental to their interest. Both seek to access these markets. U.S. farmers would like the freedom to sell their products into markets who appreciate the high quality of products the United States has to offer. Food companies would like to buy high-quality food at competitive prices. The U.S. has both productivity and logistical advantage in meeting Cuba's needs. As you well know, the Trade Sanctions Reform and Export Enhancement Act of 2000 allowed the United States to export agricultural products and medical supplies to the island. For several years thereafter, we saw a climbing market share in agricultural products. Over the past eight years, however, that market share has deteriorated drastically. Cuba has imported zero wheat or rice from the United States over the past five years. Whether it is USDA's Foreign Agricultural Service or the recently published International Trade Commission report on the subject, most sources cite financing as the restriction most significant for the reason in the decline in U.S. ag exports to Cuba. The Dominican Republic bears many similarities to Cuba in terms of population and per capita income level. Between 2013, 2015, the Dominican Republic imported $1.3 billion worth of agricultural products from the United States. During the same time, Cuba, however, imported only 262 million from the U.S. That's over $1 billion, over $1 billion the U.S. agricultural industry left on the table due to financing restrictions under which we must currently operate. It is not that Cuba is not importing these products. They very much are. According to USDA's Foreign Agricultural Service, Cuba is buying wheat from the EU and Canada, corn from Argentina and Brazil, rice from Vietnam, soybean oil from Brazil, animal feed from Argentina and Mexico, and pulses from China. These are our competitors. These countries are able to compete and win in a market where we should be exceptionally competitive due to our quality, proximity, and time of delivery. We expect that Cuba's need for these products will grow. Cuba's GDP is expected to grow significantly over the next five years, and with an expanding middle class, the ease of travel restrictions from the U.S., agricultural imports will become increasingly necessary. While Cuba may never be a trading partner to the scale of Mexico and Canada, tangible effects would benefit the agriculture industry. Cuba depends on agricultural imports in order to feed its people. With the help of Congress to ensure that the United States has the ability to finance agricultural exports from the United States, we can once again play an important role in Cuba's security. Thank you again, and I look forward to any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Lowe.
Good morning, Chairman Conaway, Ranking Member Peterson, and members of the committee. I appreciate the opportunity to appear before the committee today. I am Karen Lowe, Senior Vice President and Division Manager of Agriculture Export Finance for Cobank. Thank you for calling this hearing. Cobank is one of the nation's largest providers of credit to agriculture and other rural industries. With approximately $125 billion in assets, the bank provides loans, leases, and other financial services to farmer-owned agricultural cooperatives and rural infrastructure businesses in all 50 states. That includes my division, which provides export financing for companies shipping agricultural commodities and food products to markets all over the world. Cobank is a member of the farm credit system and also serves as the funding bank for affiliated farm credit associations, serving approximately 75,000 farmers and ranchers around the country. As a borrower-owned financial institution, Cobank returned $514 million in patronage to our customers in 2015. That provided a 100-basis-point reduction in the interest rate paid by most of our retail customers. Over the last five years, that total patronage returned has exceeded $2.2 billion. That is revenue that is invested and stays in our rural communities. I am here to discuss Cobank's export financing work and the impact that Congressman Crawford's bill, H.R. 3687, the Cuba Agricultural Exports Act, would have on removing barriers to exporting agricultural commodities to Cuba. Cobank is a leading global trade finance provider for U.S. agricultural exports, with approximately $4.5 billion in export loans outstanding. Cobank provides trade finance for the export of multiple American commodities to over 30 countries, including developing markets. These are the products grown in congressional districts represented on this committee. Your farmers produce these products, but they typically don't export them directly. We work with the companies and banks that engage in those exports to make efficient and effective markets for American farmers. As the members of the committee well realize, we are in an extended period of low prices on most agricultural commodities. This harsh reality makes every market, no matter the size, important to help move the crop and support prices. At the same time, sovereign risk in many emerging markets is increasing due to economic and geopolitical risk factors, which increases exporters' need for payment risk mitigation as well as the need for financing. Cobank offers trade finance products such as letters of credit and loans. These products help our customers mitigate their foreign receivables collection risk and/or offer payment terms to make their products more competitive in the marketplace. Cobank's export financing business benefits U.S. companies, including those focused on emerging markets. These markets include countries like China, Indonesia, Vietnam, Turkey, Saudi Arabia, Colombia, and Guatemala. Our largest market is South Korea, and our smallest, the Dominican Republic. Cobank's Agriculture Export Finance Division has two types of customers, the American exporter and the correspondent bank in the importer's country. We are proud of our work to support the export of agricultural commodities, and it is an important benefit to our customers and our country's economy. I would like to focus for a moment on H.R. 3687, introduced by Congressman Crawford. Cobank appreciates this effort to reduce barriers to ag exports to Cuba. Specifically, his bill would repeal restrictions on export financing for ag shipments to Cuba. In this time of low prices, it would help expand a market just 90 miles from Florida. The bill would also give producers and processors access to the USDA promotion programs for ag exports, such as the Market Access Program and the Foreign Market Development Program. These can help American producers compete more effectively in this market while ensuring that U.S. taxpayer funds do not end up in the hands of the Cuban government. At Cobank, we fully recognize this bill will not eliminate all of the challenges in trading with Cuba. A number of additional issues will need to be addressed, including a lack of transparency in the Cuban banking system, questions of repayment ability, contract enforceability, and even the establishment of a non-government import entity. All of these challenges will need to be addressed going forward to completely open the flow of trade between our countries. But in the meantime, Cobank strongly believes that every effort should be made to expand markets. This will help us further realize world-leading production capabilities of U.S. farmers and ranchers, as well as further solidify our position as the premier provider of food, fiber, and nutrition to a growing world population. This will provide meaningful benefits to your constituents, U.S. agriculture, our rural communities, and the broader U.S. economy. We think H.R. 3687 is a good idea. I appreciate the chance to join you today and look forward to the opportunity to address your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Lowe. Dr. Rivera?
Mr. Chairman, and esteemed members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity to testify on agricultural trade with Cuba. I am Luis Rivera, Director of the Center for North American Studies and the Program Director for International Projects for the Agricultural and Food Policy Center, both at Texas A&amp;M University. The Center for North American Studies has over 15 years of experience working on Cuba-related issues and has conducted dozens of economic impact analyses examining how increasing U.S. food and agricultural exports to Cuba will impact the U.S. economy and the economies of the states that produce those products for export. In general, we find that exports create jobs, and exports to Cuba are no exception. For every $73,600 in U.S. food and agricultural export to Cuba, one job is created in the United States, along with another $170,000 in economic activity to support those additional exports. Cuba's food imports totaled $1.9 billion in 2014. Cuba also has the potential to become a major market for U.S. agricultural exports and to develop into a market that is quite diverse, with bulk staple products such as corn, wheat, soybean, and rice being important in the near term. To put Cuba into perspective, U.S. agricultural export to Cuba of 149 million are representing less than 1% of the total U.S. agricultural exports of $133 billion in calendar year 2015. Our previous research indicates that U.S. export potential could exceed the record 709 million set in 2008. With a more open economy, less regulation by both governments, strong tourism and remittances, U.S. food and agricultural exports have the potential to exceed $1.2 billion annually within five years. Nearly three-fourth of the labor force is employed by the government of Cuba at a wage of approximately $20 per month. The literacy rate is estimated at 99.8%, the highest in the Western Hemisphere. The government of Cuba, however, is involving virtually every aspect of the business and personal lives of its citizen. Trade and investment are strictly limited and controlled by government regulation. Farther, food and agricultural imports are required to enter the country to Empresas Comercializadoras de Alimentos, al import. International trade between the United States and Cuba is strictly regulated by both governments. However, with the passage of the Trade Sanctions Reform and Export Enhancement Act of 2000, it allowed U.S. firms to legally export their agricultural products to Cuba and travel there for business purposes. From modest beginnings of $141 million in 2002, the U.S. export peaked at $109 million in 2008. U.S. export then fell to $149 million in 2015, and from January to July of 2016, U.S. exports to Cuba were down 2% from the same period last year. There are several reasons for this sharp decline in U.S. export. First, Cuba has diversified its food suppliers by shifting away from U.S. products in favor of those from Brazil, Canada, Argentina, Mexico, Spain, France, Ukraine, and Vietnam. Credit terms are offered by some of these countries, allowing al import to conserve hard currency and use credit to make larger purchases. U.S. exporters cannot use layers of credit, reducing the competitiveness of U.S. products. Currently and likely in the near future, three key factors will influence the volume and mix of U.S. food and agricultural exports to Cuba. First, remittances to Cuba, largely from Cuban-Americans in the United States, represent a major source of income and purchasing power for about 60% of Cuban households and an important source of foreign exchange for the government of Cuba. Second key factor is tourism, with a record of 3.5 million visitors in 2015 up from 2 million in 2004. The potential increase in U.S. food and agricultural export to Cuba due to increased travel ranges from 48 millions to 366 million per year, creating up to 5,500 new jobs. These estimates include only the additional spending by new U.S. visitors to Cuba. The turkey factor is nickel exports. In conclusion, the Cuban market for U.S. food and agricultural export has a potential for growth. Our estimates indicate that U.S. food and agricultural export to Cuba have the potential to exceed $1 billion annually. This additional export will support the creation of 6,000 new jobs throughout the U.S. economy. For this potential economic impact to be realized, however, several challenges lie ahead. First, sustained income growth and economic prosperity for Cubans is needed. Second, infrastructure improvement and investment will be necessary to improve the efficiency of existing supply chains and the creation of new coal chains to handle processed food. Finally, policies and regulations that facilitate trade and that are transparent and consistent are an absolute necessity. Mr. Chairman, that completes my statement.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. Mr. Claver Coron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Ranking Members of the Committee, and my fellow... Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Ranking Member, members of the committee. It's truly a privilege to be here with you today to discuss these important consequential issues surrounding U.S. agricultural trade with Cuba. I commend you for including a dissenting voice on this panel, and I'm pleased to join my colleagues here, all of whom I have great respect for. My name is Mauricio Claver Coron, and I'm the Executive Director of Cuba Democracy Advocates, a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization dedicated to the promotion of human rights, democracy, and the rule of law in Cuba. As you're surely aware, pursuant to TISRA, the sale of agricultural commodities, medicine, and medical devices to the Castro regime in Cuba was authorized by Congress with an important caveat, that they must be for cash in advance. Prior to that, the export of food, medicine, and medical devices to the Cuban people had already been authorized under the Cuban Democracy Act of 1992. This is an important distinction that needs to be made, for in order to have a productive discussion about ag trade with Cuba, we need to understand how that island totalitarian regime conducts business. In most of the world, trade means dealing with privately owned and operated corporations, but that's not the case in Cuba. In Cuba, foreign trade and investment is the exclusive domain of the state, namely the Castro regime. There's no exceptions. A noteworthy fact for all of us to remember, in the last five decades, every... A noteworthy fact for all of us to remember: in the last five decades, every single foreign trade transaction with any country in the world with Cuba has been with a state entity or with an individual acting on behalf of the state. The state's exclusivity regarding trade and investment remains enshrined in Castro's nineteen-seventy-six Constitution, Article eighteen. Since the passage of Tizra in two thousand, over five billion in ag products have been sold to Cuba from the United States, but it's a very unpleasant fact, however, that all of those sales by more than two hundred and fifty privately-owned U.S. companies were made to only one Cuban buyer: the Castro regime. Hence, another unpleasant fact: all business decisions in Cuba are based on political and control-based calculations of the Castro regime. They're not based on market forces. If the Cuban people enjoyed property rights and were able to establish their businesses and freely partake in foreign trade and investment, my testimony here today would be very, very different. Over the years, in the same committee room, I've heard testimony professing that the easing of sanctions, the redefining of cash in advance, the improvement of U.S. relations, increase of travel to the island, that that was going to benefit U.S. farmers. As we know, since December seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen, the Obama administration has done just that. As part of those concessions, the Obama administration redefined cash in advance, it eased payment terms, American travel has increased by fifty percent, Cuba's GDP grew last year by four percent, diplomatic relations were established. I lost count on all the business and ag delegations that have gone down to Cuba, so surely, these sales have dramatically increased, right? No, to the contrary. They plummeted by nearly forty percent in two thousand and fifteen, and during the first quarter of two thousand and sixteen, the slide continues, as Alimport, through the regime, purchased now only sixty-three million of U.S. agricultural products. So it's a further twenty-one percent drop this year. Of course, those of us who understand how the Castro regime operates are not surprised for his long-used agricultural sales as a tool of political influence. Let me be absolutely clear: those of us who support sanctions and oppose financing transactions with the Castro regime do not do so with the intent of harming American farmers. And conversely, I know that American farmers do not seek to sell their products with the intent of supporting or subsidizing the Castro regime. American farmers are the best in the world, and we share their desire to establish and expand markets. And as a matter of fact, I'm sure that Cuban-Americans in Florida consume more rice than any amount ever sold to Cuba pre or post nineteen fifty-nine, and we will continue to proudly do so. However, the ag groups represented here today remain steadfast in this desire to provide financing to Cuba, but that proposition must be weighed by serious factual considerations regarding the troubling structure of Cuba's business entities, military monopolies, its beneficiaries, the Castro regime and its cronies, the rights of victims, both Cubans and Americans, and whether such practices are in the U.S.'s security interest. I believe that these safeguards, which we'll discuss today, fall essentially into three categories. First, protect American taxpayers. Cuba ranks amongst the world's worst credit risk and debtor nations. Thus, I'm confident we all agree that American taxpayers must not be exposed to any direct bailout of the Castro regime. Protect American victims of stolen property. According to International Law Review, the Castro regime's confiscation of U.S. assets was the largest uncompensated taking of American property by a foreign government in history. There are over six thousand unpaid certified claims worth seven billion dollars. Many of the ports and infrastructure used for ag sales to Cuba were stolen from your fellow Americans. That needs to be addressed. We should not have Americans essentially having their rights trampled upon by other Americans, and that's something very important. Farmers understand the importance of these property rights, because that's at the core of farming, thus I'm sure that American farmers appreciate the injustice in that regard. And finally, concern, the safeguard, the third safeguard, is to prevent support for Cuban military entities. The Cuban military owns, the AP this weekend had an exposé of how the Cuban military is essentially gaming the Obama administration's travel regulations, has taken over the biggest foreign trade bank, Banco Financiero Internacional, and hotel companies. Your colleagues, the Chairman of the Intelligence Committee, Devin Nunes, and the Chairman of the Armed Services Committee, Mac Thornberry, anticipated this trend and introduced the Cuban Military Transparency Act, which seeks to ensure that any amount of resources to Cuba pursuant to any changes truly reach the Cuban people and are not funneled through the military's entities and armed forces. That is a huge safeguard. In the same way that those companies were taken over, our concern is as soon as financing comes through, Alimport will also be taken over by the military in the snap of a finger. Thank you, sir. That concludes my remarks.
Well, I think our witnesses. Well, I lost the script. Chair would remind members that they'll be recognized for questioning in order of seniority for members who were here at the start of the hearing. After that, members will be recognized in order of arrival, and I appreciate their understanding. I recognize myself now for five minutes. Well, thanks to witnesses for being here this morning. This is the clearest example of two sides to the story we could possibly have, and I appreciate the respect with which all of our witnesses treated the subject. This is a big deal, and I understand that. Mr. Isbell, I appreciate your acknowledgement that, the privilege of coming here, getting off your tractor, coming here, and petitioning your Congress, jacking us up about something you think's important. My mind went immediately to that Cuban farmer. He's not about to get off whatever it is he's on and go try to petition his government for anything that's going on there. So clearly, we've got some stuff to get done in this regard. Dr. Rivera, yesterday, and staff, you made an interesting comment that, in your view, people first want food, and then they want work, and then they want to decide their own destiny. Would you help the rest of us understand what you meant by each of those three points and why you put them in that particular order, and what's going on there in your mind?
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity again, and I've been to Cuba a couple of times, first time in April of last year and then February this year, and I saw a lot of changes. And what I do, because I speak Spanish, is instead of just talking to the Cuban government, I talk to people. And I saw a big change and a little bit of hope from people on my second trip as opposed to the first one. And I believe that, you know, as people, they need to, and this is the person that I talked to was a young father, twenty-five years old, has a wife and a little kid, and he said, you know, I just work really hard just to get food to my family, to provide for my family, but the future doesn't look very well. It's, you know, basically, it looked like he didn't have any hope, and that was, really hit me when I talked to him, because, you know, he's young, and that is going to be passing to the next generation as well. On my second trip, because of the things that have happened with President Obama and different changes, you know, I talked to people just in the Malecón area, and it's, you know, they say that, you know, things are getting better, you know, we got food, we have, I guess, we have the hope that the embargo is going to be lifted, or some things are going to change, you know, but they're still believed that they're going to stay as a communist country. They don't talk about that. But what I think is going to happen, and this is just me thinking, is that once they get reached to this other point, that they have food, that they have the necessities, they're going to be able to decide what their kids are going to be in the future.
The, Mr. Isbell, can you, you may not have this number off the top of your head. I'm trying to get a sense of what percent of the increased rice sales to Cuba would be vis-à-vis total U.S. rice production. Where would the hundred, you mentioned, I think, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand tons in that, in the near term, would be a kind of a goal? What percentage of rice production would that be?
On a percentage, I wouldn't have that number off the top of my head. We can get back to you on that, but I can say it's significant in comparison with some of our other markets. If you see, for instance, we've worked hard on sales recently to places like Iraq and things like that. You get maybe ninety thousand metric ton tender, and it moves the market. It moves the market significantly. We welcome when we see those types of demand come into the marketplace. So I'm convinced that one hundred and thirty-five thousand metric tons, I don't know the exact percentage, but it's a significant effect.
If you would mind, I'm sure Ben or somebody can get that.
Yeah, we'll get that to you.
I guess the other question would be, is, excuse me, imports or exports into Cuba, imports, whatever, peaked in two thousand and eight under even the most, even the restricted financing terms that the Bush administration had, and now has dropped to one hundred and forty-nine million dollars, which is pretty small. Do you see any evidence that the Cuban regime is targeting states and/or congressional districts to buy specific products in order to have an impact on that member's judgment? Y'all see any of that going on?
Personally, no.
All right. Appreciate that.
I do.
All right. Mauricio?
I do. I mean, it's abundantly clear, and not just me, the International Trade Commission in two thousand and seven report acknowledged that the Castro regime particularly targets states and districts with certain agricultural populations in order to indirectly influence the United States Congress. That was the International Trade Commission, not me.
What year was that?
It was a two thousand and seven report that they did, and it was repeated in the recent report that the International Trade Commission did.
All right. Appreciate that. With that, you go back. Mr. Peterson, five minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So, you know, as I said, I was in Cuba. And as I understand it, the numbers that I have for the rice people, that they're paying two hundred and forty-two dollars a ton for rice from Vietnam. It's not as good a quality as ours, but is that the correct number, or in the ballpark?
Probably, two hundred and forty. That seems low. Yeah, that seems significantly low. I think it would be more than that, but I wouldn't have an exact number for you.
And our reference price on long-grain rice is three hundred and eight dollars a ton. So we're probably comparable in price, although we have better quality. So I'm right about that?
Within reason, yes.
So, I, you know, agree and disagree with the gentleman here on the end. I don't believe, under this situation, that they're going to buy anything from us. You know, talking to this guy from Alimport, or however you say it, he has obviously taken direction from the Castros. We met with Miguel Diaz Canal, who, the Vice President, who some people say will take over from the Castro, as he's in his fifties. I think he's just as hardline as the Castros are. So I, you know, it looks, you know, you've got one person to deal with, and they don't want to buy from us, you know? And so I go to the grocery store, and they've got chicken from North Carolina, which is a big part of our exports. At five dollars a pound, the average people can't buy them. It's only the embassy people that are buying them and, you know, tourists. You know, so, you know, I'm supportive of Mr. Crawford and what we're trying to do here, but I just want to caution people. I think that these folks, you know, are not going to change, and it's because, in their words, of the blockade. It's not the embargo, it's the blockade, you know, and this has been going on forever down there. So where I disagree with the gentleman on the end is that, you know, we've had this policy for fifty-some years, and it hasn't worked. And so I don't know, you know, what the other, if opening this thing up is going to work either, but clearly, what we're doing isn't working. And what I'm worried about is this, that we're going to make some kind of a deal with Cuba to get them to come into the situation, and we're going to actually screw some of the people in the U.S. in the process. That's what I'm worried about, you know, more than anything else, you know? So I'm for lifting the embargo if it's straight up, and they don't get anything out of it. You know, we just lift it and let the economics and the situation take care of itself. In my opinion, that's probably the only way the average people are going to ever get to a point where they've got enough money to buy anything, you know? So, you know, I just don't see, you know, we can pass this bill, I don't see it's going to make a whole lot of difference. I mean, do you have any kind of special insight or relationship with this guy that runs Alimport that thinks that you're going to get him to open up this market?
No, I don't. But what I would say is what we saw happening in the early two thousands is a perfect test case for what can happen again. When we were able to compete under fair terms, there were the...
So who was buying it? So I thought that everything that came in had to go through this guy, because it seemed to me that even the grocery stores had to buy everything from this guy, even the domestic stuff. Am I right? You know, so this one guy controls the whole thing. I went into the grocery store, and I said, I want to see the sugar, you know, because I've got a big sugar district. So they go take me over, there's an aisle, it's empty on both sides. And I said, well, this is the sugar. I said, well, I thought Cuba produced sugar. Well, they only get it once every two months or whatever, and people know when it comes in, and then it all disappears, and they don't have any for two months, you know? But I mean, it's, so as far as I understand it, this guy controls everything, even domestic sales, seems like. Am I right?
Yes, sir, and I too agree and disagree with you in the sense of that I do believe Cuba wants to buy our products, U.S. products.
Yeah, they do, yeah.
But they want us to pay for it.
Right.
You know, they don't want to pay for it, and it's like they've done everywhere else in the world. And, you know, we see in Brazil, Vietnam, you know, that in their selling of those products, those aren't competitive terms. As a matter of fact, right now in Brazil, the loan terms that were given by Benevis, which is the development bank to the Cuban regime, are under federal investigation, because it's political, they're political.
And one of the things I'm worried about is Brazil financed this port, as I understand it, three, four hundred million bucks. And they told me that Brazil is talking about giving them a whole bunch of money to reestablish their sugar industry, which has been, come apart. And we don't need any more sugar in the world. We've got enough of it, you know? We don't need people going back into something, and it would not be economic. It would be, they'd lose money on it, you know? So...
And Congressman, that now has changed with the change of government in Brazil. That loan that was given for the Port of Mariel is under federal investigation by the Brazilian authorities for corruption.
They're just not doing that?
And I argue, funny enough, that I think that the change of government in Brazil is going to do more to help U.S. rice farmers sell on their current terms than anything we can do, financing or otherwise.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Jim, it's time you was back. Mr. King, five minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I do appreciate this hearing, and I'm curious about a number of things here, and I'm resisting for the moment the urge to start off on a monologue, but I'd instead turn my first question to Mr. Gibson. And you talked about the share of the market that you could gain if we could open up trade with Cuba, or at least open up some credit with Cuba. And you say Cuba's imported zero wheat or rice from the U.S. in, what, I think, the last four years or so, something like that. And so I wanted to ask you about your concept of the market, and that is that, then who's selling that rice to Cuba, and where is your product going? Are people going to, your real question is this: are Cubans going to eat more if we trade with them, or do we have an alternative market that our products go to regardless of whether it's easy to export to Cuba because of the cash restrictions up front?
Well, to answer the first part of your question, people are going to eat. The real question is, how much do they have to pay for the product? So in the current environment...
But I'm not interested in that. I'm interested in, are they going to eat more or less? Does that affect their diet, or is the overall world market going to be to the appetite of what people can afford? And then it's just a difference in the logistics of what the basis is between shipping rice to Cuba and selling it to an alternative market somewhere, say, for example, Vietnam.
Competition will always lower prices. So when people have more money, they eat more.
Okay. Well, slightly more. I don't think you have any numbers on that. And so I just take it to this point that, in the business I'm in, we want to see, we want to see more, we want to see more construction projects out there, because we've got a bigger market to bid into. And I think this is a tiny little margin. It's eleven million people on a little island out of seven billion people on the planet. So we could divide eleven million by seven billion and come up with a percentage of appetites that would be potentially affected by this. I'm just putting that into a perspective, because I think we're a very narrow vision on this, and I'm, like a number of people in this room, I've made my trip to Cuba, and I ended up spending nearly a week with an individual who I'd better not identify him, because he would be busted by the Castro administration, but I paid him cash to travel me around from early in the morning till late at night, and I learned a lot. I learned a lot that you don't learn when you're following Castro's minders around Cuba. And some of these things are this, milestones about the history that we ought to be thinking about in this fifty-year-plus saga of trying to free the Cuban people, back when we believed in promoting freedom around the world, and we will again. First place is the Soviet Union propped Cuba up, and Cuba was a sugar-promoting island at the time. The world market on sugar then was six cents a pound, and the Soviet Union traded them fifty-one cents worth of oil for six cents of sugar. That's how they propped that regime up through all of that time until the Soviet Union collapsed economically, and then Venezuela picked up the slack. Oh, by the way, those Russian tractors are probably still sitting down there, rusting, and they've been parked for parts, and now we have the only civilized country in the world that I know of that went from mechanized agriculture to animal husbandry, went backwards instead of forwards. Now there's a billion feet of rope in Cuba to tie down their animals that they used to farm with, but Venezuela filled that hole. And when Venezuela goes under, then the President of the United States decide, I'm going to open up negotiations or relations with Cuba, and now we're in the business of negotiating here on how we might open up trade with Cuba to try to help their economy out and help the Cuban people. And I heard Ms. Lo say that we wanted to keep the money out of the hands of the Castro regime, and I hear Mr. Claver Coro say, well, every trade agreement for the last fifty years has been exactly with the Castro regime. And so it looks to me that the President of the United States is interested in bridging this administration over and giving help to the transition from the Castro administration to the successor, which we've talked about. And this whole policy has been about the biological solution in Cuba that has to come one day, and it is more imminent every single day, and that Castro's lived a lot longer than we anticipated that he would. And I don't know that this administration has a plan to transition and promote freedom in Cuba. I suspect they don't, because it looks like to me that they have a plan to prop up the Marxist regime. And I don't want to curse the Cuban people to the next eleven, or the eleven million And I don't wanna curse the Cuban people to the next 11, or the 11 million Cuban people to the next 50 years of living under a Marxist regime. And then, the money laundering that goes on in Cuba, it was 21 pesos to the US dollar when I was there, it's 23.14 pesos now. Cubans can earn American dollars, they can hold them, but they can't spend them. They have to go to a Cuban bank where they get $1 for, they, they get, they get $1 for every 23.14 pesos, and the, so the, so the Castro picks up, he get, they get 1 peso for every, for, for every dollar, and they, Castro picks up 22, 22 pesos out of that. He gets the vigourage, that props up the Cuban administration. Castro runs the hotels, American dollars go into the pockets of the Castro regime. This big-picture part of this thing has not been addressed in this hearing in an adequate way. I recognize testimony, Mr. Claver Coron, and I think that we have much more we need to discuss before we move forward with something that would facilitate a Marxist regime in Cuba. Thank you, I yield back.
Your time has expired, Mr. Castro, five minutes.
Mr. Costa? Costa.
Costa, Mr. Costa.
Portuguese.
There is a Castro in Congress, but un--
No, there is.
All again, uh, but not on the committee.
He's from Texas.
Mr. Castro.
California.
Costa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I, I mean, I think we all have some odd ideas about the nature of the Castro regime. I mean, it's, it's been a Marxist dictatorship since, really, its inception, and it's obviously, uh, in all ways that we view, um, human rights and freedoms that we cherish in this country. The Cuban government, its behavior toward its people has been the antithesis of, of what we believe in our country. Let's be clear about that. I, I think what we are witnessing is a transition, the Castro government, uh, I don't believe is gonna be in place indefinitely, um, and, um, no one, I don't think, at this point can predict what will occur after, uh, the brother is no longer able to maintain the facade of his predecessor. And, I, I guess, Mr. Corona, to, to your points, while some of, um, your issues that you raised are, I think, are valid, um, I, I don't think it anticipates that continuing to do what we've always done over the last 50 years is somehow going to change, uh, or create change that we would like to see occur. Mr. Rivera, I, I, I guess, um, what I didn't hear from you, and I'd like to get your sense of, is if those of us who are looking at the long game, the long-term game, and Ms. Low, you may wanna comment as well, um, these steps to begin to open discussions and, and formal relations, I think, is a first step. I think, obviously, based upon conditions and reactions, and, and we're really talking about the next administration. I mean, this administration's done what they've done, for better or worse, whether you agree or disagree, and it's gonna be up to the next administration to determine what kind of relationship they want to set up, under what sort of conditions, as we go forward, uh, between ourselves and Cuba. So, Mr. Rivera, what do you see as the long-term game here? And Mr. Low, I mean, obviously, we have, I, I too is one of those who have visited Cuba, there's, from California agricultural perspective, there's a lot of opportunities there, provided you have the right set of circumstances. And, uh, please give me your sense, Dr. Rivera.
Well, as, as I mentioned in my statement, you know, more trade creates jobs, and, uh, for the, for the US is basically an opportunity.
Now, we get that part, but I'm talking about, uh, what's your sense of the transition or the changes when, uh, the current President Castro no longer is in power? How do you think that's gonna change?
Well, and again, this is talking to a couple of people in the Malcon area, and they believe that they're still gonna be a communist country. We also have some faculty from Havana--
Right, we've got a communist country in China that we do a great deal of trade with, they, they call it socialistic capitalism.
Right.
Uh, Deng Xiaoping, when they were converting to socialist capitalism, said, "What color, what care does one have of what color the cat is, as long as the cat catches mice." Uh, and they needed to change, and they did. And now we trade, everybody trades with China, uh, and there are challenges there, too. Ms. Low, do you have any insight, perspective?
Um, I'm not sure I understand the specific question, you mean on the regime change?
Yeah.
Oh, apologies, on the regime change?
Well, on what, 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 what we ought to be thinking in terms of trade in the longer term.
Well, I think in the longer term, I agree with the comment you made just a few moments ago, this is a really important first step in what is probably going to be a fairly long process. Um, but I think it's in a very important--
I think five, 10 years is what we're talking about.
Yeah, I, you know, I wouldn't even begin to guess how many years, but at the end of the day, you know, for the good of the American farmer, the American egg economy, um, we, I think in the long term, we wanna create as many opportunities as we can in every market, including one that is so strategically close to the US and frankly needs to import a vast majority of their food products.
No, they have lots of problems.
So that equation is good, I think, you know, as I mentioned, there's going to be a lot more work that has to be done. I mean, candidly, as, as far as a credit risk, Cuba is very, I'm very skeptical about Cuba as a credit risk today, right? There's not any transparency, there's not good quality financial information that's credible, verifiable, et cetera. So a lot of things need to happen, um, you know, the creation of a non-government-owned import entity--
So, Mr. Corona, your, your criticism, and I saw some of the European investments, Canadian investments, and others in Cuba when I was there, are those governments propping up those investments, those foreign countries that have invested?
Absolutely. I mean, it, you know, you mentioned, but everyone has their geostrategic interests and geopolitical interests--
Right.
In that sense, you know, European Union sanctions, Belarus and Zimbabwe and other countries, that we have different types of, of interests and regards and, and, and in that matter. But the important question you, you, you pose, which is pivotal here, is what's happening in Cuba right now, which is essentially an apothetic transition. Essentially, 80% of the economy right now is being put in the hands of the Cuban military led by Raul Castro's son-in-law, General Luis Alberto Rodriguez Lopez Caillias. Raul Castro's son is now heading up the Interior Ministry and all the intelligence and repressive apparatus. His grandson is heading up the Personal Security Service with his own personal kind of secret police, per se. So we're now seeing all of this happen on their nose, and if we give away the United States, if we were, everything that's in trust for the future of Cuba, for future Cuba's Democrats and others, we're essentially handing it to this mafia and this next generation.
You're making it sound like Cuban's version of the mafia or the Seminoles.
It is, it's the Gobelli family, the Castro family.
Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Mr. Thompson, five minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Low, uh, the, the US farm economy is facing very low commodity prices, and in these situations, we need to take advantage of every opportunity. Can you expand on the possibilities of increased trade with Cuba and what exactly it can bring to the rural economy?
Well, I think in the, in the very short term, I think the, the impact of this bill passing would be somewhat limited. Um, but the important thing, again, is to take that first step to create a level playing field. You know, it's very, very clear, as, you know, everybody appears to agree that, that the sales that are occurring are oftentimes with the support, um, in, in this case, of foreign government support. For example, the example of Korea providing export credits, um, for the import of, of Korean products. So I think in, in the short run, there won't be, um, I agree, that there won't be a very significant change, because many other things need to happen, particularly in terms of the creditworthiness of the importing entities in, in, in Cuba. But absent this next step, followed by other steps, we have to continue to keep the ball moving, so that over the period of time, we will create a level playing field for the US and will be able to compete. I also believe that, that once the possibility of financing and the market becomes a bit more open, that will be further impetus. I mean, I think other countries will push in this direction as well, for the Cuban government, Cuban banks, to be able to produce the type of financial information that they're going to need to be able to produce to more fully integrate into the world economy, um, including the financing of their, of their products. So, other, other governments that are supporting them now, they've made their risk cost-benefit decisions, um, but they're gonna require repayment of those obligations. Cuba's gonna have to continue to demonstrate they can meet their obligations, those current obligations and the refinanced historical obligations. And, and, and over time, I think they will be able to, um, take the steps that they will need over years, I believe, to, um, really be able to be a full partner in, in a, in a level playing field of global trade.
I wanna follow up specifically on, uh, obviously, our number-one industry in Pennsylvania is agriculture, and our largest commodity is dairy. And right now, our dairy prices are, um, around $14 per hundredweight, well under what it's costing to, to produce, um, the milk. And that, it seems, as I've looked at this, I mean, trade is a key issue with this, uh, specifically, I think we're, I know in Pennsylvania, and I believe nationwide, but I'll just speak to Pennsylvania, our dairy exports are down 65%. Interesting enough, it's due largely, as I can trace it, to Russia. Not that we trade dairy with Russia, but Russia's put an embargo on European Union milk, and therefore, where we would export our dairy products, uh, the European Union's kind of, uh, out of necessity is flooding those areas, shutting our, uh, our milk and our, our farmers' commodity out. And, and I know Mr. Rivera had testified that recently, a large amount of Cuba's cropland was taken out of permanent crop production and placed in native, unimproved pasture. Uh, you know, I suspect an attempt to increase milk production, which has declined about 10% since 2003. What role or opportunities do you see the United States dairy farmers playing in Cuba's market? Anyone that would like to take that question would be great. Go, go ahead, Dr. Rivera.
Well, uh, I think, again, we used to send a lot of dairy products to Cuba, uh, back in the 2008, 2009, now we don't send anything. The, the main products that we send to them right now is, uh, leg waters, chicken, uh, we send a little bit of soybean and soybean meal and corn. Uh, that, that's, that's about it. Uh, so I think, you know, it's, uh, it's an opportunity there, because, uh, they basically consume 1.75 to 2.1 times more of the grains, meat, and dairy products that, uh, that, uh, that they actually produce. So it's a big, big opportunity. You mentioned low, low, uh, prices, low commodity prices. When you look at the percentage of the farm income that comes from, from, uh, exports overseas, has increased from 28% in 1996 to over 35% in this year, or 2015. So we depend a lot on the, on the, on trade to, uh, to survive, uh, for, as a percentage of the farm income.
Yeah, it, it was remarkable to me that, that one country that we don't directly trade that commodity with, you know, could have such an influence over where we are today with the per hundredweight prices on dairy. So, thanks to the panel, Chairman, I yield back.
Your time is back, Mr. McGovern, five minutes.
Well, thank you, and I wanna thank the panel, I wanna thank the chairman for having this hearing. I wanna thank my colleague Congressman Crawford for his bill, um, I support it, um, and I hope that this hearing will result in quick action by this committee to mark up HR 3687 and have it enacted before the end of the 114th Congress. Um, I strongly support normal trade relations with all countries, uh, unless there are internationally recognized and approved sanctions against them. Uh, and in the case of Cuba, the United States is the only nation in the world to maintain trade sanctions, indeed, a trade embargo against, against that country. Uh, I believe we should lift the travel sanctions we impose on our own citizens, uh, and I believe we should end our unilateral trade embargo. And, um, and so I, I, I see ending restrictions on US agricultural trade as a step in the right direction, and it's certainly an area of policy where there is broad bipartisan consensus that ending these restrictions on US agricultural goods and allowing our farmers to trade with Cuba on normal terms will be good for our, our farmers and, and good for the Cuban people. I've been to Cuba many times, and my first visit was in 1979, um, and I was there when the president went down, um, to announce the change in our policy. Things have, things have changed, not as fast as we would like them to change, but there are indications that, uh, that things are changing, uh, in a way that in 1979, the Castro government would have been strongly against. And they're changing not because of anything we're doing, uh, they're changing because the whole world is down there. The whole world is able to trade and to travel there, uh, but we're not. Uh, and, and I, I'm a believer that American farmers, the American people, uh, American businesses can do more to open up political space in Cuba than all the saber, saber rattling and tough talk, uh, tough, uh, talking speeches that come out of the United States Congress. Um, you know, as my colleagues in this committee know, I'm very interested in issues related to strengthening food security here in the United States and globally. And US exports of rice and dairy to Cuba don't just support the state or the tourism sector, they also go to the warehouses and supermarkets that supply Cuban citizens. Our soybean oil and meal feed, uh, feed the livestock in Cuba and feed the people. So, I would like to ask, uh, Mr. Isbell and Mr. Gibson, if you could expand a little bit more on how you view US agricultural sales to Cuba helping not just US producers, but Cuban citizens and consumers?
Absolutely. You know, the, the important thing about, um, trade is that it can benefit both sides of the equation. And, um, as, as many have mentioned here today, it's, um, it's incredibly important that we continue to try to find ways to better the lot of the average Cuban citizen. And, um, I think the way we can start is by, by extending freedoms back to our own people here in the United States, by, and set an example for, um, for the Cuban administration to do the same to theirs. Our, our goal is not just to, to trade rice and, and to make money, it is to benefit the, the average Cuban citizen. With USA Ros, we've got, um, technical, um, exchanges that are in the works and certain things like that. And I think, um, over time, we can build bridges between individuals, um, that greatly benefit not just the rice farmers and the industry throughout the United States, but the, the average Cuban citizen over there, and that's our goal.
Thank you. I agree with Mr. Isbell, uh, and, you know, one thing to add is, is human nature is to, uh, get along better with people you trade with. I've been in the trade industry for 20 years, and, and I go to people that I trade with every day when, when problems arise or when we need to discuss things. And having any relationship with Cuba from an agricultural standpoint might just open up some dialogue to, uh, help the Cuban citizen. When we look at the US rice farmer, um, I've got plenty of farmers in Mr. Isbell's area that would love to sell me more rice, but I don't have a place to go with it at the moment. So, uh, any trade we can open up when it comes to US rice, wheat, corn, beans, uh, just opens up more markets for our US farmers so that we can supply the rest of the world. You know, we're gonna have 2.3 billion bushels of corn left over after this harvest that has nowhere to go.
Right, well, I, I appreciate, I, you know, because I, I think, you know, we, we, all this emphasis is focused on how this benefits the Cuban government, but, uh, when you go to Cuba and you talk to regular people, they see the benefit to themselves. And look, the one thing I think we all should be able to agree on is what we've been doing for close to six decades has been a miserable failure by every measure. Uh, it has not, uh, served our interests, it has not helped the Cuban people, um, and when something's not working, uh, you know, especially after almost six decades, maybe it's time to, to reassess. And I, again, hope that we can move quickly on this, on Mr. Crawford's bill, but that I yield back my time.
Your time has expired, Mr. Cr-- Austin Scott, five minutes.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've spent a lot of time over the last year or so speaking with people from, um, Cuba, and the one story that sticks in my mind is a gentleman that I spoke with a few months ago, said that when he was a child, they would put a, they would tell the kids to put their head on their desk and to pray to God for candy. And they would lift their head up, and there would be no candy on the desk. And they would tell them to put their head down on the desk and pray to Castro for candy. And they would lift their head up, and there would be candy on the desk. And so then, the indoctrination of the Castro regime has gone on down there for a, a long, long time. Um, but those same types of indoctrinations have gone on around the world. There are a lot of oppressive people out there, a lot of, a lot of oppressive leaders or people who happen to be in leadership positions, I should say, around the world. My question, and maybe this would be for you on the end, what, what is the state, state of the church in Cuba? Are people allowed to worship?
Um, well, Congressman, it's a great question, because we've now heard multiple times this whole question about, you know, if we have this, the policy that we've had over 50 years, and it goes to that. I'm all for change, but not change for the worst.
But, but answer my question, what is the status of the church? Are people in, are people in Cuba allowed to worship, or is that regime so oppressive that--
They're only to, they're only allowed to worship on state-sanctioned churches. And since December 17th, 2014, religious persecution in Cuba has gone up tenfold according to Christian solidarity worldwide, so it's getting worse since the new policy.
Okay, so, um, I mean, I, but, but we don't have travel bans to countries that are even more oppressive than that.
But we don't have other countries that, or tourism industries owned by the Cuban military and intelligence services.
We do have, we, there are other countries, though, where, where the, the countries that are so oppressive and those-- are so oppressive and those governments do own those industries. I mean, it's not the Castros, but it's others who are, who are similarly oppressive.
If your number one source of income is tourism, like the number one source of income for Iran is oil, we're going to sanction tourism to Cuba and oil to Iran. It's logical.
But you, there is no, there is no travel ban to Iran.
Because tourism is not a, a source of income for the Iranian regime.
But there's no travel ban to Iran, and quite honestly, they're a much greater threat to American citizens than, than Cuba.
Because there's no, because the Iranian regime does not market tourism as their number one source of income.
But there is no travel ban to Iran, and they're a much greater threat to the U.S. than, I mean, Cuba is 90 miles from Miami, my wife's from Miami. If, if we're not there, shouldn't we expect other countries to be there that may not be our friends?
Congressman, there is a cemetery in the Florida Straits of hundreds of thousands, if not nearly a million Cubans, that were trying to flee to one country, the United States. We are their beacon of freedom. If we start acting like Canadians and Europe and French and everybody else going and vacationing in these Cuban military resorts and embracing this regime, we're going to lose being that beacon of hope for the United States.
I'm not talking about embracing the regime.
Well, that's, that's what it is.
You're not answering the questions, though.
That's the reality. I am, sir.
No, you're not. You're, you're, you're not, not with facts. I mean, this, this is an emotional argument. I, I just, I feel for the people of Cuba, and, and I don't understand how having a travel ban, keeping good people from going to that country, is helping the people of Cuba.
We don't have a travel ban, sir. People are going to Cuba, and, and what they're not allowed to do is tourism transactions through military-owned hotels and resorts.
Reclaiming my time, I won't ask you another question, I apologize. There's got to be a way to tie human rights and the improvement of the human rights conditions in, in countries to expanding, expanding trade opportunities for those countries. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that whatever we do going forward, we need to keep in mind the people of Cuba. I'm, I'm not interested in helping the Castros, but, but not trading with, with Cuba is not helping the people of that country. With that, I yield back.
Chairman, you'll back, Ms. Bustos, Ms. Bustos, five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman Conaway, and thanks for hosting this hearing today along with Ranking Member, Mr. Peterson. It's an important conversation that we're having, and it's very important to farmers from my state, which is Illinois, and I think farmers all over our country. And thank you to the witnesses for taking your time to, to spend with us today. In the last year, I've been to Cuba twice. One of those times was with my, was with my colleague Congressman Davis, also of Illinois. The entire purpose of that was to talk about agricultural possibilities for, for the state of Illinois. A second time was with the president, and it was, it was an honor to be able to go there and, and advocate on behalf of our, our family farmers. I too am a proponent of Congressman Crawford's resolution, and I'm a strong supporter of it. And with that said, just to, actually, my first question is, is to, to find out a little background that would, would help me. Dr. Rivera, from Texas A&amp;M, you talk about the possibilities of ag trade from the United States being somewhere around, what, 1.2 billion or $2 billion? And you have assigned 10% of that to the state of Illinois, that those are the possibilities, the ag trading possibilities. Just want to know a little background on how you have come up with that number, so I can explain it when I'm talking with our farmers back in Illinois about that.
Sure. Basically, what we did is that, looking at the states that produce their domain commodities, and, and also looking at the percentage of what is exported, and that's basically the, the percentage of us assigned to Illinois, because I believe will be corn, a, a, a big, a big commodity there. In Cuba, they require a lot of corn. They're buying it right now from, from Brazil, but we can sell a lot of our corn as well.
Yeah, we do a pretty good job in Illinois on corn.
Yes, ma'am.
And beans.
Yeah.
Okay, that, my, my second question is, is I, I think I'd like each of you to address this if, if you could, but Secretary Bill Sac also was on the trip with the president, and there was a memorandum of understanding that was signed. I, obviously, you've each addressed some challenges, we've heard about some challenges here from our fellow members of Congress, but wondering, in light of that memorandum of, of understanding, what has happened since then? What do you see as the possibilities for that? Maybe we can start with Mr. Isbell and, and go down the line, and if each of you can give us your thoughts on that, please.
More specifically, the, the change since, could you repeat the question, the last part of your question?
Wondering what you see as the possibilities with the memorandum of understanding that's been signed with the U.S. Department of Agriculture and the, and Cuba? If we've seen any results of that, if what you see is ahead for the possibilities because of that memorandum of understanding?
If I remember correctly, the, the memorandum of understanding created some exchanges on environmental aspects as well, and I think that's one place that agriculture can engage with Cuba and create some new relationships through, through that. Other than that, it just lays the groundwork to continue the work that we've been trying to do, to open that next door and take the next step.
As far as the memorandum itself, I'm not familiar that it's really created a whole lot. We appreciate the memorandum, but really, until we solve the financing issue, we just can't go anywhere.
I honestly have nothing to add to what my, Mr. Gibson and Mr. Isbell have said. I agree with that. It's, it's a, it's an indication of interest and intention, but we need to take some concrete steps to move the needle.
I would say the same thing as well. One other thing that it could, it helps also is just to start looking at inspection agencies like AFIS, for example, and try to have same regulations on both sides to try to, what we export and what we import from them as well. But the finances, is, financing is the main, the main issue. What, that's what Alimport tells us.
As I mentioned in my testimony, since December 17th, 2014, exhales have plummeted last year, and they're further plummeting this year than the time when we had the strongest sanctions in 2008. What that tells you is essentially, the more of these hearings and conversations, and the more they think they can get from the U.S. Congress for us to pay for our own exhales, the less they're going to buy. It's, they're trying to squeeze the U.S. Congress, frankly.
Thank you, and, Mr. Chairman, my time is up, and I'll yield back. Thank you.
Chairman, you'll back. Mr. Crawford, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate you and the ranking member for holding this important hearing. I want to put a little perspective on here. I don't think we're acting like Canada, I don't think we're acting like France. I think we need to be about acting like the United States. Let me give you an example, historic perspective here. 1985, that was the year I joined the Army. U.S. trade to the Soviet Union was around $2.1 billion. The height of the Cold War, the Soviet Union was actively engaged with the Afghans. And I served in that theater later in my tenure in the United States Army. So somehow, we managed to find a trade relationship with the, with the Soviet Union, a very hostile regime, a very oppressive regime. I'm not going to give you any more further background on that. Vietnam, 2001 bilateral trade agreement, established permit, normal trade relations with Vietnam. 10-year hot war with Vietnam, a very oppressive regime. Don't have to give you all the background there. We've seen an increase of 1,200% in trade in Vietnam. So I'm not asking us to act like Canada, I'm asking us to act like United States of America. I think it's reasonable to think that we should provide opportunity for farmers. When I talk to farmers in my district, they say, you know what, we can get by without all the policy things that you're messing up in Washington if we can do a handful of things. One of them, get the EPA off our backs. I think we can all agree on that. The other, open up market opportunities for U.S. producers. And the third, we're seeing the evidence of yesterday with the WTO being taken to task over China, corn grain manipulations. The point is, my goodness, we, we have to look at this thing over and over again through the lens of the Cold War that's been over for 20 years. I understand your concerns. This bill was written specifically to address the concerns and the sensibilities of the Cuban expat community in South Florida, very specifically because we have a very sensitive understanding of how this is, as we've seen here, a very emotional issue. But my goodness, can we, can we look at this in, in a different context? Mr. Isbell, if you would, give me a little bit of perspective here. I know you mentioned 135,000 tons. We've done the math here. I gave, I gave the chairman a bad figure earlier, but it's been refined. That represents anywhere between 3% to 5% of total U.S. production, is that right?
That sounds correct.
And you see some long-term potential there. My, my, my point is, I'm concerned that if we are not actively engaged in Cuba at this point, that there's a void of American leadership. This is what we say all the time, this is what's going on with, with trade agreements and world affairs. We've seen a void of U.S. leadership, and when we don't lead, bad things happen. And I just think it's time that we revisited this in a more productive light. I, I know that these are not good people that are, that are calling the shots in Cuba, I know that. Neither were the Vietnamese when we fought them for 10 years. Neither were the Soviets when we had the Cold War for 40-odd years. For that matter, neither is China, who's grossly manipulating their currency and who oppresses religious minorities and who squelches free speech, and yet we've got billions and billions of trillions of dollars in economic investment in China. So are we to retool those relationships? Are we going to scale back our, our investment in China? Are we going to quit doing business with our friends in Saudi Arabia, who beheaded more prisoners last year than ISIS? I mean, come on, this is, it's, it, it's not that difficult for us to look at this in a different light, understanding that 55 years hence, nothing positive has been yielded by the current posture. So I understand there's risk. We don't want to put taxpayers, taxpayers at risk. The bill is written so that taxpayers are not at risk. A private sector entity can engage in these transactions at their own risk, and that's the chance you take in the marketplace. We do that today, every day. Heck, I've, as, as a former radio farm network owner, I had slow payers, some that would take six months. I'm talking about some big, big clients, take six months to pay me. That's the chance I take in, in the business world. Do I want to do business with them again? I don't know, I have to rethink that. That's my decision to make. We're not putting the taxpayer on the, on the hook with this. And I didn't intend to get on this, go down this trail. I really wanted to get some, some information like Mr., from Mr. Gibson about, you know, recognizing that there's a lot of international investment, for example, in the port of Mariel, and how that plays into this whole ag, ag goods. I'm running out of time, but, you know, my point is, we've got a lot of data here that we could be talking about, and, and it, it comes down to this, we're, we're continuing to look at this issue over and over again through the lens of 55 years' worth of failed policy that has yielded no positive benefit for anybody here or in Cuba. And with that, I yield back.
Chairman, your time has expired. Ms. Graham, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was born in Miami in 1963, y'all can do the math. So I've lived with this issue my whole life, of our relationship with Cuba, 90 miles from where I grew up. And I've listened to a lot of the conversation here today and have agreed with a lot of it, disagreed with some of it. We started this meeting with the chairman speaking about leverage, and I've made a whole lot of notes on my page here as we've gone through this discussion. And I think it does come down to that. I do think we need to incrementally start opening up our relationship with Cuba, and I say incrementally because we do want to hold this oppressive regime accountable for its human rights violations. And I don't want, down the road, when the Castro brothers are no longer in power, I was concerned when I heard Mr. Peterson's comments about the vice president coming into power and being equally as totalitarian. So I think we can all agree that we don't want a void to be in Cuba that could potentially be filled by worse actors across the world. So I, I, I've been supportive of Mr. Crawford's bill because I think we do need to be taking incremental steps. But I think at the end of the day, what we want, and I didn't mean to go on about this either, but as a Floridian, this is personal for me, what we want is to help the Cuban people at the end of the day, many of whom have families in South Florida and all over Florida. So what can we do? And I guess my question is, Mr., for Mr. Claver Corone, am I saying that correctly?
Yes, ma'am.
Was it close enough?
Yes, ma'am.
I do think we made a mistake in being overbroad in, in easing restrictions to Cuba because we've lost our ability to have some leverage. But what do we do as, as we, as we lift restrictions? What steps can we take, and this could be one of them, to have enough leverage that the Castros will feel inclined to have some of the benefit of trade trickle down to the citizens of Cuba, the people we want to help, right? I mean, I don't know if you have any suggestions, any ideas?
Congressman, I, I agree with you wholeheartedly in regards that our goal should be to help the Cuban people, and in that, and in that, I would say, if this bill essentially said, we want to authorize private financing for agricultural sales to privately owned and operated companies and entities in Cuba, I would be its biggest cheerleader right here. But that's not what we're discussing. We're talking about providing private financing to one company owned by the Castro regime that's going to hold food hostage over a people. So we're increasing what essentially is, is their control over the Cuban people. That is my concern, and thus the safeguards that we want to be able to lay through.
So back to my question, because I can tell you, I did a little, I did, I Googled you. You know a lot about this issue.
Hopefully, good stuff.
Is that the verb, right? To Google now? To Google?
I don't know, is it painful when you get Googled?
We say in my office, because we're southern, we say, we Google it up. We Googled it up. I Googled it up. Okay, back to the question. What steps would you feel were appropriate to start to, if any, to start to, to build a relationship with Cuba so that if, in fact, when the Castro brothers are gone, we're not left with this void, that we have no relationship? See, I can see both sides of it. We don't want to leave a void where we have no relationship with Cuba, but it has to be incremental. One thing that I would suggest we would do would be to allow American companies to work with Cuba in offshore, offshore, offshore oil drilling rigs. Because if, God forbid, they don't have the best, I know we're getting way off topic, but if they don't have the best science and engineering for those oil rigs, and there is a spill, it's going to all flow south. That's how the, the water flows. But is there, one of the reasons I was interested in Mr. Crawford's bill is because I do think we need to be taking incremental steps. And I don't know what the answer is, as a Floridian, as someone who was born and raised in South Florida and understands the passion of these issues. I don't know. So maybe you and I could have a conversation at a later time and, and talk more in depth because I'm way off topic, and I yield back, I'm out of time.
Chairman, your time has expired. Dr. Binechek, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Boy, this has been really interesting for me, and I frankly don't quite understand many of the issues. Like, are we the only country that doesn't trade with, with Cuba, Mr. Claver Corone?
We do trade with Cuba. We sell the agricultural products, and we have exemptions.
But like the embargo, I, what I don't understand is why, if we open the trade up, since the rest of the, the world trades with Cuba, if that, why hasn't that opened up the regime? That, that doesn't work, so why adding us on there? How does that?
Good point.
How does that open up the regime more than the rest of the world already having a trading relationship, but already having difficulties in getting paid? So how does, if we do that, how is that going to make it different than the rest of the world failing and their economy still being a failure?
Well, I always argue the fact that, you know, all of the countries that do business with Cuba and have not promoted any type of positive change, even that regards, you know, when people say the U.S. has a failed policy, I would say, well, why do we want to follow the failed policy of even more countries? You know, at the end of the day, whether we agree with the U.S. policy towards Cuba or not, it is a principled policy which conditions certain fundamental rights and security concerns. I mean, and, and, and Congressman Scott had mentioned the, the whole Iran versus Cuba. Iranian President Rouhani is going to Cuba today to meet, this week, to meet with the Castros. They're not going to discuss anything that promotes U.S. interests. This is 90 miles from our shores, so there are other.
Well, I, I agree that, I think there's a very, very bad security risk for America to have them there. But another thing that you mentioned in your testimony was that the trading with, there was testimony, you've heard testimony here how the trading with Cuba would benefit U.S. farmers, but it seemed to me that you didn't feel that was true. So can you explain that position?
My, my argument was, what I was saying is, when we've had the previous hearings, as, as the ranking member was discussing, when they previously discussed this issue, the whole argument, now it's about financing. It used to be about the definition about cash in advance, and in 2000, it was just about authorizing. In 2000, the argument was, if we authorize agricultural... agricultural sales to Cuba, that was going to fundamentally change Cuba because we're going to have all these interactions, et cetera, et cetera. It hasn't done so. To the contrary, it's made the funnel even narrower. And what I want to do is broaden the funnel so that Cuban people be able to partake--
Can you tell me more about why you think that the exports have gone, or the trade has gone down, and how do you think that this squeeze, you mentioned squeezing Americans? Can you talk a little more about that?
Because essentially, what the Cuban regime wants is the same as it's gotten from Brazil, Vietnam, and others. Essentially, it wants us to pay for it. It wants our taxpayers to guarantee it, and then essentially wants to just control it. So therefore, and it wants, also non-related to the issue today, it wants U.S. tourism. Tourism is his number one source of income. So you'll note that when, and a lot of you that are in, that go down with farm delegations, what the Cuban regime always argues is that we need more American tourists to come down so they spend more money, so then we can buy more products from you. That's unrelated, per se, but that's essentially how they're trying to, you know, go around and squeeze Congress on issues that are non-ag related.
Let me just ask another question similar to what Ms. Graham mentioned, and that is, what, is there any kind of an incremental demand that we can make on the Cuban regime to free things up to, you know, tit-for-tat, "If you do this, we can do this"? What is the way forward that would, what is there, give me a concrete idea of what to do, other than, I don't see an idea.
I just laid one before you with the Congresswoman's question. If you were to simply craft a bill to say, "We want to, we will allow private financing with Cuba," so with private companies operated by private entrepreneurs in Cuba, like we do with every other country in the Western Hemisphere, frankly, that's how it works in every other country in the Western Hemisphere. We don't do it through a state entity in that regard. So if we do that, that seems to me like a positive step to press the regime to say, "Hey, you know, you're not going to be able to control everything that comes from the United States." And, you know, and I would arguably say that that would be an interesting move.
In the short time I have left, can you tell me more about the American assets that have been confiscated by the Cubans, and now we're going to be using those assets to--
Congressman, I have, I know, I know the owners of, the American owners, they were American in 1959, of the port of Havana, of the port of Santiago, where a lot of these agricultural exports that go to Cuba go through and are transported through. Those were stolen without compensation. So we have to recognize that every ag sale that's made to Cuba, even under these terms, is essentially trafficking in some, on another American's stolen property. That issue should be addressed because that's frankly unfair to the American victims that were, that were, I want to say kindly, that were screwed over.
I'm out of time.
Your time expired. David Scott for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to look at this as an economic issue because fundamentally, that's what this is. Economic interests and what's in the best economic interest of our American agriculture system. With Cuba, having a population of 12 million people that imports 80% of its food only 100 miles from Florida, giving Cuba convenient access to the United States and our incredible array of agricultural food and products, having the world's largest, most significant agricultural economy, I think it is very imperative that we look into any and all possibilities of opening up increased trade with Cuba. It just makes good business sense to do this. I understand the regime. I understand the communist regime. But look, the citadel of the communist regimes is Russia. And we certainly trade with them. And look at China. So I think we have to look at this with a very jauntous eye and say, "What's in the best interest of the American business? Our farmers who are struggling." Now, Dr. Ribera, I believe, I read your testimony. And in your testimony, I believe that you said that U.S. food and agriculture exports have the potential to exceed more than $1.2 billion annually within five years. Why would we deny that to our American businesses? Now, so let me ask you, if we could change just one thing in regards to the restrictions placed by the United States trade with Cuba, tell us, what would that be with the aim of getting the largest increase in exports to Cuba, thus money into the pockets of the American farmer?
I think the answer to that is just let our farmers compete for that market with the same terms that other countries. And I think we'll do very well. That's what we believe, that we can capture about half of that market, which is about $1 billion in the short term. I mean, we produce, we're really competitive on producing the products that they need. Grains, meat, and milk, we're competitive. And I think if you give the opportunity to our producers to compete, I think they're going to do a good job.
I agree with you 100%. I mean, for people that may not know, of course, I represent Georgia. Georgia, in 2014, Georgia imported about 7.8, totally in the United States, Cuba imported $147.8 million in poultry, meat, and eggs from the United States. But then in 2015, that number dropped to 77,006 million. That 45% drop is not good for my state of Georgia. We are the nation's and the world's leader in producing poultry. And Georgia produces, on average, per day, roughly 29 million pounds of chickens, 6.3 million table eggs, and 5.5 million hatching aids. We want that to have an opportunity to get into Cuba. We're less than 600 miles from Cuba. We have a fantastic savanna plant. All of the infrastructure is right there. And even right now, Cuba currently serves as the sixth-largest poultry export for markets for Georgia's poultry. We are exporting right now $20 million worth of chicken to Cuba each year. So I want to look at this as a sound economic investment for the United States, and particularly from the interests of our farmers who deserve to be able to get their market, their products, to the Cuban market. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Your time expired. Ms. Lamoff for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for calling this hearing on this important and interesting topic. I also appreciate the thoughtful work that Mr. Crawford is putting in on this effort and makes great points and arguments on this. As well as Mr. Isbell can relate, I'm one of those rice farmers, too, that made some of those trips to Washington, D.C., wondering when they're going to get it straightened out. I hearken back to when there was an American ag movement. The tractorcade came to D.C. a couple times, late '70s, early ' '80s. And I remember one of the quips by one of the farmers, like, "Well, we're going to stay back here and fix this thing if it takes all week." So I hope he got all week. So, but again, thank you for being here, the chance to meet with you a little bit earlier as well. I had to leave home this week when we were starting rice harvest as well. It turns out about as green as Ms. Nicole's dress there, so we'll have to wait a few more days to cut some rice. But you miss that at home. I'm just wondering, since 2009, we haven't seen any rice imported into Cuba. And what, why do you think we were exporting more into 2009, which is during the same administration than now?
I think there are a number of market forces at work that, that God, how rice trade happens at any given time. But with the credit restrictions, that creates another impediment that we also have to overcome. I'll make a very simple analogy. Every now and then, you have to get a new tractor on the farm. And if I go to one town over and the dealer says, "I will sell it to you, but you've got to pay me cash today, and I'm going to bring it to you next month." And I say, "Okay, I'm going to look around a little bit more." And I go to the other town, you know, the other direction from the farm, and I say, "How will you sell me a tractor?" And he says, "I'll give you 90 days." Who do you think I'm going to buy the tractor from? I think, I think you being a farmer, you understand that as well. I'm going to go with the person that can extend credit. Right now, we do not have the ability to extend credit because of the statutory limitations that are in place. And so with that--
I'm going to see whoever has the 179 still in place at the end of the year, but that's something else. But I've heard some numbers on how many tons we might be putting in there, you know, 135,000 tons might go in. I was looking at a Farm Press article a little bit ago. One of the southern marketers was thinking maybe up to 550,000 tons. And I don't know, I guess, I guess those might be kind of pretty optimistic numbers with the situation with Cuba economically. And I'm, some of the, some of the things that doesn't make this, me jump right at this, is some of the concerns about one man, one regime, everything running through them and Cuba. And I'm not there to help prop up Castro either. So this is really a tough thing that I'm torn on. But I mean, what, how realistic are some of these numbers we're hearing on what kind of tonnage could be going in of rice or other commodities?
Anecdotally, frankly, I think they're conservative. But those numbers come from an academic study that I believe has a lot of validity, so I have no reason to question them. But to your point about going through one entity, and I think this has been made several times in the hearing today, it's, it's less than ideal, I admit that. However, I know your district sells quite a bit of rice to Japan, our friends over there, and a lot--
And TPPs look like there might be a skinny 70,000 tons, which about 600 guys could grow, you know?
Right. All of the rice that goes into Japan goes through a government entity. All the rice that goes into Iraq, Jordan, Saudi Arabia, goes through a single government entity. It is not unique in the world. That is something that takes place. They're less than ideal situations, but they're ones that we work with. And I think there are ways that we can, we can do that as we try to continue to influence change without taking out the opportunities for the American farmer.
Okay, thank you. Let me jump to Ms. Low real quick here, too. I'm concerned about the extending of the lines of credit and the ability at the bottom, at the end of the day, for them to actually pay for these products. And most of the stuff has gone cash on the barrelhead in the past. Is that right? So how far are we going to be out there extended on credit that may come back against, you know, the taxpayer versus, or something like, please?
At this point, the discussion is extending credit from the private sector. So each individual extender of credit, the person that was going to have to make their business decision as to what terms they extend, for what period of time, et cetera. So I can't comment specifically. I mean, certainly, we know that there's a lack of transparency in terms of the financial standing of the sovereign and the banks and the banking system. And I'm sure that would extend any private companies as well if they are ultimately able to buy our products. So that's, that would be my biggest concern as a private sector lender to Cuba for trade finance. Other, other countries and other exporters are doing it. They're making their business decisions. I'm not sure based on what information they're doing so. But as I mentioned earlier, I think the ability, the simple ability to extend financing will, over a longer period of time, lead those buyers to be able to produce that type of information so people can make good business decisions.
Thank you. I better go back on time, ma'am.
Time is expired. We're way over. Ms. Wolorski, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Gibson, I have a question. Again, I appreciate the whole panel's input here. There's, it's a lot of information, but it has answered a lot of my questions. But some of the estimates we heard for the potential of increased trade with Cuba are dependent upon lifting the travel restrictions or the embargo. Is there potential for increased ag trade even if those restrictions are not lifted? Or is this an integral issue here, connected?
Specifically on the travel issue?
Yeah, on travel. Can we actually have, can we have, can we have increased trade without lifting the restrictions? I'm not advocating we do this. I'm just asking how it works.
You know, I'm not going to say that trade would not increase without lifted travel restrictions. But, you know, going to see your customer, understanding how they need the product, when they need it, that's really important in the trade business. So, you know, we travel, our company travels to most of our customers to make sure that we're meeting their needs, and quite honestly, to make sure that we feel comfortable in the financing piece on how we're going to get paid. So that travel piece is definitely an important part of the bill.
Okay. And Dr. Ribera, I have a question. Your estimate, and we just talked about this a second ago, says that 60% to 80% of the Cuban diet is attributable to food imports. And that's kind of echoes off of my colleague's question. Do you believe imports will continue to account for most of the Cuban food supply in the foreseeable future? And what capacity does Cuba have for increasing their own domestic production?
Cuba, being an island, we can compare it to other islands around, like Dominican Republic or even Puerto Rico. Puerto Rico also imports about 85% of the food that they consume. So we would think that that would be the same thing in Cuba. Now, Cuba is the largest island in the Caribbean, but they're, they're very limited in terms of agricultural land. They need a lot of inputs as well, a lot of investment in technology, fertilizer and all the things. So I don't think they're going to be able to rack up their production, you know, soon. And if they do, I think, I still think that they're going to depend a lot of imports to feed their people.
And just another question, and it really echoes off of what Representative Thompson was talking about. And I believe he was talking about sugar. I sit in the state of Indiana with Purdue University, with the Chicago Mercantile Exchange, CME. A lot of folks reading barometers on agriculture constantly, and, you know, looking to the report with the weak crop prices, just disaster coming with low corn prices. And so my question is kind of the same. And I know that none of you are here from Indiana to speak on behalf of Indiana farmers. But could you just kind of speak to that, to how the access to the Cuban market could actually help? Who's your farmers in my district? Would this help with commodity prices? Can the U.S. recapture some of that lost market share in corn, given where Cuban is with corn? Can you just speak to that whole issue of the corn market?
Sure. It's just, it's basically finding another market. If we don't find another market for our excess production, it's going to stay in stock. And the stock basically is going to basically increase and reduce our prices. If we can find places that we can, countries that we can place our corn, basically, it's, it's going to increase the demand, which is raises prices. Now, again, you know, Cuba is a small country. They import about $2 billion, you know, but it's still significant. You know, if you ask the producers, you know, do they like to have access to a market of $2 billion in food imports? I'm sure they're going to say yes. So it is important. And like I mentioned before, about 30, over 35% of farm income comes from agricultural exports. So we depend a lot on those foreign markets, and to keep those foreign markets in compete to, to make a living for our producers.
I appreciate it. And Mr. Claver Corone, just really quickly, you mentioned the idea, and I think somebody just asked this as well, but about a good faith compromise. Talking, we're talking specifically about agricultural trade. Where do you think the common ground is with Representative Crawford's bill in finding some kind of common ground with what you're talking about?
Yeah. Well, so what we're, if we were to take the approach that I was mentioning before, and it was just about finding a way to, you know, do business and finance, private financing to private entities in Cuba, it would be a different story. But what we're trying to figure out here is how to finagle a way to allow private financing to one entity owned by the Castro brothers. So obviously, what is a concern to us is, first and foremost, the issue of the, of the property, of the trafficking in property from other Americans. I think that that's something that needs to be addressed. And secondly, what happens tomorrow, as we're seeing, particularly since the president's policy, when the Cuban military takes over, I'll import directly and says, "Hey, I want that financing, and I want to control it directly." Do we trust them with our money? I frankly don't, but--
I appreciate it. I yield back, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Abraham, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate that. I appreciate this hearing. You've heard from everybody today that the status quo for the last 50 years has certainly not worked and certainly hasn't been beneficial to our American farmers. And when we don't do anything-- And when we don't do anything, as Representative Crawford said, as a leadership country, we see what happens in countries like Cuba. And we are, I think, getting some maybes interspersed with facts here. The fact is, the last 50 years has not been good for Cuba, it's not been good for the American farmers by any token. As Mr. Scott referenced, we need to look at this certainly as an economic issue, and certainly we don't want to forget the human rights issues of the Cuban people. But what we've been doing has not been working whatsoever. And you've got Rouhani meeting with Castro today. You've got Kim Jong-un that wants to come over and meet with him. You've got all these bad players that all of a sudden want to be part of the puzzle because we're not there. And that concerns me, that if we're not there, they are there. Russia was there. I was in Cuba earlier this year and I talked to no less than, I quit actually counting after 50 people. I was with cab drivers, we went out to the farms. I would talk to people on the side of the road that could understand my English because of my southern drawl. But, and I ask them all the same question. Do you want American products and do you want American tourists? And I really had a notepad because I thought I would get some debate. 100% said they want the products and they want our goods. So again, you know, we need to look at this as a trade issue for our rice and certainly other products that will take care of our farmers first. And certainly, we want to help the Cuban people, but they have to help themselves and we know that. And we have to help them, empower them with the American dollar. Ms. Low, on other countries that do trade with Cuba, do they honor their credit agreements? Do they pay?
Well, I guess they don't have any-
Microphone.
Keep forgetting that, sorry. I don't have any, you know, detailed personal knowledge of that. I do know there are many countries that are extending export credits in terms of insurance and guarantees to help their exporters make sales to Cuba and mitigate that payment risk. I know there was a renegotiation of a lot of the debt, Paris Club, at the end of last year. I think there is some concern about the government's ability to, over time, continue to make all of their payments on a timely basis. And I've heard anecdotally about some slow paying, but I'm not aware of any defaults that have occurred recently.
Mr. Corone, I read your testimony before I came here. Now, is it my understanding that Alimport, that is not the only state-sponsored agency where you can get goods in? Is that a correct or an incorrect statement? I mean, there are other ways to get goods into Cuba. Is that right or wrong?
No, sir. All U.S. exports to Cuba have to go through Alimport. It's the sole entity. And to mention, and in regards to your first question, I think very interesting, in regards to the credit risk, they have defaulted on every debt. The reason why they're now going through these debt restructurings with Paris Club and all these people is because they're forgiving debt that they've defaulted on before and just, and I was looking for the exact quote, but I'll just, to summarize, just in July, July 18th of this year, so a few months ago, Raul Castro said, "Oh, by the way, yeah, we're late paying debts again and-"
Well, then, so if we don't step up and get our products in there, and if you have people like Rouhani from Iran and Putin and Kim Jong-un that want to come in and support, are they going to pay the bills for Cuba? I mean, who is going to prop this government up financially? And I use that term-
Great question.
But who, if we don't get our products in there, if we don't get our tourists in there, putting American dollars in there, who's going to do it?
It's a great question. The only time that the Cuban regime has ever made any types of reforms has been when they've lost their subsidies. So the Soviet Union, after their collapse, and then now, they made some until after Venezuela and their oil collapse. But now, what we're seeing is that since the Obama administration's new policy, they're actually stopping and they're slowing down and things are getting worse again because they think that we are now going to go subsidize them.
Well, I guess that's my concern, is that I don't want Venezuela or Russia or China paying Cuba's bill because then they become a puppet government of that country. And believe it or not, it can get worse. We want to make it better and, you know, I just can't, we can't go, I'm out of time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Jim, it's time, it's time, Mr. Molinier, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate this discussion very much and Mr. Crawford for putting this legislation forward so we can have this discussion. I just want to assure Mr. Isbell and Mr. Gibson, you know, I'm very interested in seeing our agricultural product exports very strong and looking for new markets for our products. So I guess what we're talking about here is somewhat of a foreign policy question, and you are in the midst of this. So just to be sure, Ms. Low, I appreciate your comments. I believe you had at one point said creation of a new entity that would need to occur before you felt comfortable with the financing. Is that accurate?
Mike.
I think I would learn by now. I think that would depend on, my understanding was that if we were not allowed to extend financing to Alimport, then there would have to be the creation of an entity that would be acceptable to us. So that may be a necessary step. Whether or not we would extend financing would be based on our due diligence, as we do on all of our borrowers, to make sure they were creditworthy in our eyes.
Yeah. Okay. I just found it interesting that we've talked about foreign governments sort of subsidizing exports to Cuba and also this idea of forgiving debt. That was kind of new information to me as well. And I think some people had mentioned the credit risk involved. And so you, I would think that would be something, part of your due diligence. So you think you ought to have the opportunity to evaluate that, but you aren't in any way making a commitment to that right now?
No. I mean, I don't have enough information to do so. And I will say, in the case of, for example, the Korean Trade Insurance Corporation, I assume it's similar to our Export-Import Bank, you know, they have announced, I think, $60, $70 million of credit insurance guarantees. So they recognize Korean companies are probably not going to feel comfortable exporting and taking that payment risk themselves to Cuba. So they are providing insurance. They want to promote that trade and they are making some sort of cost-benefit-
Sure.
... assessment, right? I don't know how much information they have as to the ability of the Cubans to pay them back-
Yeah.
-on a timely basis or with some reasonably small amount of delay, but they've apparently determined that they want to have the job creation, the access for their, and they're willing to take on that credit risk to promote that trade.
Okay.
Because probably those Korean private companies wouldn't want to sell just on open-armed credit terms.
Okay. Well, thank you. And then, Mr. Claver Corone. I wanted to, you know, I was intrigued by your idea of private entities, kind of, that you'd be okay with legislation that would open that up. Are there entities like that? Is there an infrastructure? Or is that just something that would have to be developed?
I always mention, and there's an inherent contradiction in some of that has been said before, when we say, "Oh, because we want to kind of expose the Cuban people to our ideas and how to be entrepreneurs," and I always tell people, "Have you ever been to Miami? It takes a Cuban about a week and a day to open up a store in Miami and to be a very successful entrepreneur." I mean, this is inherent in them. And also, when people travel to Cuba and in your delegations and as you just mentioned and others, they always say, "We love Americans." Now, think about this inherently. For 50 years, you know, we've had sanctions and we've been enemies of the Castro regime. And the Cuban people love us despite all that onslaught of propaganda and lack of information. We're doing something right.
So let me build on that. So you feel confident that it would be possible to develop those kind of relationships, but would your concern be that the Castro regime would not allow that to take place?
Well, the Castro regime currently does not allow that in the sense that we believe in private enterprise, but we would like, so there is something called the Quinta Propistas, which are self-employment people, but they don't own certificates of corporations, they don't own, they're not able to sell their companies, they don't have any stake. We want to encourage that and we want to build upon that. If those individuals were able to do that, just like when they get in a week and a day to Miami and open that up, then that would be a positive trend. So if we, if the Congress sent that message to the regime that you need to allow your people to be independent entrepreneurs, have property rights, and be able to engage freely in trade with the United States-
And your feeling is the leverage that we have right now, we ought to use that to have some constructive change?
I believe that if our policy, our principled policy, if we're going to export our principles as we said, we should also make sure that we do it under conditions and under terms that are consistent with those principles.
Okay. You know, just to clarify, so you, are you a Cuban-
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you have family or relatives-
Yes, sir.
-in Cuba?
Yes, sir. Family, friends.
So when we talk about caring for the Cuban people, this is very personal to you.
I venture to say that no one cares more than on this panel than myself, as much as I believe, obviously, that everyone cares, but it's definitely personal. And to make a quick point in that sense, I am not against taking money from Castro. To the contrary, sell him as much as you can, take his cash. Our concern is handing money to that regime through that funnel and through that filter that then, we don't know how they're going to function with it, you know, but that is our main concern.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Time has expired. Anyone else? Mr. Crawford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate you allowing me a little bit of latitude here. As you noted in your opening, there are certainly passionately held views on both sides of this issue, and I'm certainly one of those. And I care about this issue, I care about the Cuban people and as we have a familial bond with the Cuban people, as you know, as you've just expressed. I also care about our farmers and, you know, I represent half of the U.S. rice crop, it's important to me. But let me just say that we've had this conversation about the need for safeguards and I completely understand that. That's why the bill was written with those safeguards in place. In fact, it's the only bill I know of that lifts financing restrictions on agriculture but has the built-in safeguards. In this bill, the U.S. government is prohibited from promoting products or financing exports with the Cuban government or any extension to the Cuban government. These can only be done with private entities as certified by the secretaries of ag and state. So it's right there in the text. Let me be clear about the concerns that we hear. We've already attempted to build those safeguards. Let me just ask you this, with all sincerity, and I know that because we're both so passionate about this, Mr. Claver Corone, if you'd be willing to continue dialogue, to work with us and work with me on refining this to the satisfaction of the folks in South Florida that are so passionate about it as we are, and if we can do that, I think we have a path forward to try and to reach an agreement that we can, everybody can live with.
As I mentioned from the get-go, I have tremendous respect for everyone on this panel, for you, for everyone here, and we love agriculture. I mean, that's so, so we want to help U.S. agriculture. And likewise, I know that you don't want to support a regime that is hurting our people. So therefore, I'm all open for continuing this dialogue and discussion and finding ways to do so.
I appreciate that. And I think, you know, as time goes on, we're both probably going to be prone to displays of emotion on this and hopefully we can overcome that and move forward productively. And again, I want to thank the witnesses and particularly my friend, Mr. Isbell, who is middle harvest and he took time away to come and be heard and represent the rice industry. Mr. Gibson, thank you. Ms. Low, Dr. Rivera, thank you so much, I appreciate it. And Chairman, thank you, and the ranking member for your latitude.
Thank you. Jim, you'll go back. I also want to thank our panelists. As I said early on, there are passionately held positions on both sides of this issue. Mr. Isbell, you're at risk. If that harvest goes better while you're here, they may ship you off all the time to get you out of their hair so they could do it correctly. I know that's what they do with Doug Lamoff, and they couldn't wait to get him back to here. Good people on both sides. And quite frankly, I didn't hear anyone say anything different as to where we want to get to. It's how you get there is the struggle. Neither side's arguments are completely persuasive. You're right, 60 years of a policy hadn't worked, got that. But I'm unpersuaded that our involvement in China and Russia has turned them into beacons of hope. All the zillions of dollars of investment there, the travel, travel, all that stuff, didn't work in those regimes either. This is the only entity, only country where it's the same two guys. I mean, we all thought Father Time would get Castro by this point in time. I was down there in '07, December of '07, and we thought he was done. We were worried if he died and the revolution broke out, we couldn't get out of the country. Well, that's eight years ago and the old goober's still working it. So unlike Vietnam, unlike the Soviet Union, we're dealing with the same folks. And so I'm not persuaded, you look at what happened after the president did the reset in December of 2014, as soon as he announced he was going to Cuba, that historic event, they started rounding up dissidents as a preemption and arresting people for no good reason. Since that's happened, internet connections have dropped. Cuba is now worse than Syria, Zimbabwe, Iran, China, Venezuela, in terms of whether their people have access. When I was down there in 2007, there was 10 of us on the trade, on the delegation, and President Bush had said, "Don't go." And we were down there, I was with nine guys like McGovern. They all wanted instant opening relationships with Cuba. And so at every meeting, there would be either McGovern or Greg Meeks or Jeff Flake or Jerry Moran would say, "We're all for getting this thing done except this guy." And they'd point to me. All right, so I got thrown under the bus every single time. At the exit interview, we had a big press conference, they had all the cameras up there, it was a big, huge array, and I got to go dead last because everybody else was worn out. And my comments were, "You know, a regime that is afraid to let the Cuban people know the baseball box scores for the National Baseball, Major League Baseball. They're afraid to let their people see those Cubans who have fled the country doing well in baseball. Are we making any progress?" And so there are no good answers on this deal, there's no good solution. I am pleased that we are making some progress. Mauricio represents a passionate group of folks who want to get something done. Rick, you're representing a passionate group, I'm a co-sponsor in your bill. There's a path forward. It's going to take wisdom and discernment and nobody's got the exact right answer. But I don't see anybody saying we need to get to a different point. We all want to get to that point where the everyday lives of Cuban people are a little bit better. This is not going to turn into a nice democracy the way we understand it, that's just not going to happen. But it ought to be better than it is. And that's, we're in a position with leverage now that no other country has, that we can exert that leverage at the same time not hurting our farmers and ranch, and exports and exports. The number that, 135 million tons, 135,000 tons is about 1% of our production. And so the 500 would get closer to your 4% or 5% number. So it's not a panacea. I'm unconvinced that corn is not being sold down there now, that somehow us selling our corn there is going to move the market price, because that's not an unfulfilled market. You've got to have new demand, and that would be supplanting somebody else's. And so all the arguments have got their goods and their bads, mine included. But this was probably the most respectful hearing we've had on a really contentious issue, deeply passionately held opinions. And I'm really proud of that committee for the way they conducted themselves today and explored this. And obviously, we're not done. So with that, I, you've got a, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to congratulate you on, again, pulling together very timely, it's a very, very important issue. And I would say that our strategy moving forward with Cuba could be summarized as sort of being like, we need two trains running. There's no question that we need to deal with the horrendous human rights situations that you're concerned about, Mr. Chairman, in Cuba. There's no if, and, and buts about that. And then we've got the other train running, which I think is an obvious one that helps us to get ready. Father Time has a way of dealing with a lot of problems that we may not be able to deal with. And I'm reminded of when the prophet Samuel came to David in the Bible and he poured the oil on his head. David was a young fellow. And so he asked Saul, "What do you do here? What are you doing?" And the only answer Saul could give him was, Samuel couldn't, was, "Be ye ready." He didn't know what that meant was be ready for king. So all I'm saying is that this other train that we got, making sure we're ready to get in there and to be able to open that market for us. Many of our farmers are struggling, many of them depend upon that. And so this other train we'll call, "Let's just be ready," as Father Time might help us to work out the other side of the problem that you're so concerned with. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Jim, you'll go back. With that, under the rules of committee, the record of today's hearing will be opened for 10 calendar days to receive additional material, supplementary written responses from the witnesses to any question posed by a member of this hearing of the Kemiata Agriculture is adjourned. of the Kamaeata agriculture is adjourned.